I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. There is a copy of the Open Meetings Act in the meeting room, accessible to the members of the public. We'll move into the -- and all city council members are present. We'll move into the consent agenda. Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. C, replace and receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on January 3, 2023, as on file in the city clerk's office. E, approval of the treasures report of claims in the amount of $479,267.04. Approval of Boswell report of claims in the amount of $61,553.67. Approval of write-off of ambulance bad debts. Refer claim of Matt Schmidt regarding damages to his personal property to city attorney and the city insurance carrier for review and deposition. Resolution number 6992 appointing Dan Kunsman to the Citizens Advisory Review Committee. Item J, resolution number 6993 appointing Jim Franz to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Resolution number 6994 reappointing Vaughn Wright to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Resolution L -- no, item L, resolution number 6995 entering into the farm lease with Taiton Harms for farming purposes. Item M, resolution number 6996 entering into the farm lease with Adam Kimmerling for farming purposes. Item N, resolution number 6997 executing the application for federal assistance and any other documents required by the Rural Workforce Housing Land and Development Program for the purpose of acquiring real estate for the development of rural workforce housing. And item O, resolution number 6998 executing the crack and joint filling agreement with the state of Nebraska Department of Transportation Aeronautics Division to retain the division to seal cracks and joints at the Beatrice Municipal Airport. Are there any items a council member would like to have removed?
I'd like to have H removed.
Anything else?
I have a couple of questions, but I'm --
Yeah, we can wait till --
Later.
We'll do a move in -- we'll move in second, and then if you still have
Got it.
Questions, if you still want to pull that off, you certainly can.
I move that items listed on the consent agenda, with the exception of item H, be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
Second.
Your vote, please. And that passes. Now we'll go back to item H.
I move that item H listed on the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
Second.
Okay, I just, by looking at this, this goes along with something that happened to me on the -- with the sewer backed up into this home. And you know that that's happened to me a few months ago here. I guess my question is, is this seems to be happening a little bit. Do we know the reason why, you know, this seems to happen?
You know, as far as the number of them, there aren't -- I think this is the first one we've had maybe since yours, so it's been several months since we've had them. The reasons vary. Sometimes it's tree roots, sometimes it's construction debris, sometimes it's, you know, kids plopped up in a manhole and stuffed something down in the sewer that shouldn't be there. You know, the reasons vary from place to place.
Is there some type of a preventative backup, you know, thing that we could install on our homes that would prevent that?
I'm sure that there is. I directed this prime to the local plumbers to see what they would recommend for personal residents for prevention of backups.
Any other questions? Your vote, please. And that passes. Councilman Doyle.
Really, I just have a couple of questions. You go to meetings every single day trying to learn this thing. There's just a lot to learn here. But I noticed last month that we had a utility bill from the Humane Society, and this month we have a quarterly contractual fee also in claims. I'm not against that. I'm just curious about what we're contractually doing with them.
With the Humane Society?
Yeah.
You have a contract with the Humane Society, I believe it runs for end of this year, that we paid them a, I believe it's $30,000 per year.
Okay.
You pay them quarterly. And then we also agreed to pay up to $1,000 for their utility bills at their current location.
And that goes, how long did you say, Tobias?
I believe it runs to the end of this fiscal year.
Okay. And the other one was Engage. I know we're giving them our -- we're transferring to them 150 grand a year, but the bill in here is 24,000, and that doesn't divide out to be a quarterly amount of 37,000 or 38,000, whatever it would be. So is that on like a reimbursement basis, or how do they get paid?
So it's a reimbursement basis. Both the county and the city have an agreement with Engage to reimburse them up to $150,000 per year. So every quarter, we take a look at their expenditures for the previous quarter and see what's allowed by state law, and then reimburse them. We reimburse them half, the county reimburses them the other half.
Got it. Okay, thanks, Mayor.
Okay. We'll move on to item three, public hearings and bids. There's a public hearing on the application of Family Dollar Doing Business As Family Dollar Store, 21953, at 810 Court Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a new application for a Class B liquor license.
Chet, you want to come on up? And I guess I'll be sworn in for chief.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay.
Chet, you want to go first, or you want me to?
Go ahead.
All right. So in the stand-in for Chief Hickman tonight, the police department did their standard investigation when it comes to a liquor license, and their background investigations on the two individuals in the application showed nothing which would prohibit the issuance of a proposed Class B liquor license.
And community development office did our planning and zoning review of the area surrounding the businesses and that stuff, and we found nothing to prohibit this from going through.
Questions from the council?
I don't have a question, just a comment, since we have people here, and you're going to put this on, so Class B is what?
It's -- go ahead.
It's off sale beer only.
Only.
Yep.
From the public. Gentlemen, your vote, please. Oh, sorry. We need a motion to close the hearing.
I'm new. I move the public hearing be closed at 7:07 PM.
Second. Now your vote, please. Hearing is closed.
I move that the new application for Family Dollar Doing Business As Family Dollar Stores, 21953, 810 Court Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a new application for a Class B liquor license be recommended to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for approval.
Second.
Gentlemen, your vote, please. And that passes. Okay, we'll move on to resolutions. Typically on the resolutions, I know for these two items that we have, there's going to be some discussion from the council and from the public. We'll address questions from the council first, or comments, and then we'll move to the public, then come back to the council for final comments. So, resolution number 6999 designated all traffic traveling on 8th Street between Ella Street and Monroe Street as two-way traffic.
I move the resolution number 6999 be passed and adopted.
Second. Your vote, please? Oops, let's do a discussion -- yeah, let's do a discussion first. Don't want to do that, sorry. All right. Okay. I know that I was hoping that a lot of people would have comments, and I know I've been sent some comments. I'll just share the comments that I have, and then we'll turn it over to the rest of the council. The comments I had, and I will tell you that I was contacted by a total of 22 people. Three were against, 19 were for. I'm not going to read all the comments, but they kind of went through a similar vein. A number of people said it sounds like change for the sake of change itself. One, a couple people said there was based on lack of accidents, not sure why you'd want to change it. Several people pointed out that they believe 6th Street between 11 and 1, Monday through Friday during the lunch hour, tends to be a lot more dangerous than 7th and 8th Street. They believe, I had a couple people believe that the curve, I think it's at Grant Street, two-way, could be more hazardous than one-way. Had one that wants to go back and change 5th and Ella on the northbound. And then they believe that with the one-way streets when it was changed, and it changed -- I'm not sure when that was, I wasn't around. It seemed to help accidents at, and reducing accident problems at 6th and Court. Two of the people that were voted that liked to see it maybe changed said, "It sounds like a drastic change, but if a lower speed could help, they would be more comfortable keeping it one-way." And then one gentleman said that he believes he's got alley issues, and changing 8th Street to two-way would help him. And so those are the comments that I have had. And with that, I will open it up to the council to share their comments, and then we'll go to the public.
I'll just say, Mr. Mayor, that the -- I had a few people stop and talk to me, had a few phone calls on the question of 8th and Grant and the curve in there, the same thing exists at 13th and Grant. So it's something that everybody's dealt with in two-way traffic at 13th and Grant for as long as I've been alive. So I don't know that in 54 years, if there's been a terrible amount of accidents there. I just gave away my age, I apologize. So that there is, I don't see that being a hindrance, and we have it already at 13th and Grant. There, I had a mixture of both for and against on 8th Street, since that's the street we're discussing at this time, so that's my input.
I contacted, I went to people's homes. I asked for the letter to be sent out that most of you, I hope you got. And I was contacted, let's see. I had to just check here to be sure, you know, 30, 32 looks like people. Basically, the comments I have gotten is staying the same, I'll just say that there was eight people that were totally forced leaving it alone. I had 19 that were in favor of changing it, but they also said that if, you know, we would reduce the speed, you know, they could possibly live with it, you know. One of the comments, two, actually two people that I talked to, one this morning, said they live right on the end, you know, I'll just say like you're living on the end of 8th Street, a block on the north side, and then you, to go, they want to go, go north, they've got to go down a block, over a block, and back a block, you know. So basically, they're going three blocks out of the way, or two blocks actually, out of the way to get to where they're going. I also talked to the daycare center, I think it's Doodle Doo's or something like that, on 7th Street. Their concern was the fact that, you know, that the people, you know, had, were parked on one side of the street, had to cross the street, and the traffic was very heavy. And so they were, you know, again, concerned about the speed as one of their main concerns. They're afraid that sometimes, you know, kids, if kids happen to go across the street, you know, somebody could get hit. But overall, like I say, you know, mine went to more sort of change. I did go door to door, not to everybody, and I'm sorry if I didn't get to see somebody. I do know that there is a couple here that I did talk to. And, you know, so I think we really need, need to take it, you know, seriously. I know people are concerned about the flow of traffic, but I've got some numbers here that was taken in 2016 from the state of Nebraska. And per day on 7th Street, there was 1,450 cars. So if you average it out, it's about 60 cars per hour, so one a minute. On 8th Street, though, there was only 800 cars. So that's about 33 per hour. Give you an example, 2nd Street down here, there's 3,200 cars per hour, and that's a two-way, and there's no problems there. The thing is, is I don't think if we do change them to two ways, that it's going to interrupt the traffic flow, because there's not that much traffic on them that would cause any slowdowns. You're still going to be able to take 7th Street. I would not recommend in putting up any more stop signs, leaving the stop signs as they are, so they are through the street, so traffic could still flow at that, at the pace that it's going. So anyway, you know, I know people like going down them. I travel them, like I admit. I don't do the speed limit on them, I, you know, because I'm in a residential area, but I'm always in the right lane, too. I never, I don't know, I just never go over in the left lane, unless I get down toward McDonald's, I'm going to turn to go to 6th Street, then I get in the left lane. So there is an issue, you know, that I, never mind, I'll talk about that at a later date, depending on how the vote goes here tonight, so.
Mayor, of the people that I talked to, it probably ran about 80% don't want to change. I think everybody that I talked to said they really would like the speed to slow down, and that's what I would like to see. I think 7th Street has more speed on it than 8th Street probably does, and that would hopefully be slowed with a lower speed limit. On the other hand, Duane, I don't, I asked Tobias this earlier, is there a reason that we could not put a stop sign at Summit? If we're talking about a straight shot, and that's a huge concern, that they pick up the pace after they leave Lincoln Street and just get really cruising down around Summit, or even down towards Garfield, is there a reason why you couldn't put a stop sign there, just to break up that pace? But if speed is the most important thing, that's what I got, was 80, 80% no, 20% yes.
So, so give everybody, since everybody's here, so I'm assuming the majority of the people here are listening to this, comment on this. So let me, let me just give you a little historical background. So the traffic study that Duane alluded to in 2016, that was something that I asked for. So at that time, I contacted the -- I worked in the area, but for those who don't know, I used to be a delivery driver for UPS, did it for a very long time, worked here in the city of Beatrice for 26-plus years. So I, I worked in this area every day for almost three decades. So, and there wasn't a single day that went by that either my package car or me didn't just about get clipped. So I went to the chief, I served here on the council, so I went to the chief of police, and I asked Chief Lang at the time, what can we do? And his response was, the simplest thing to do is make it two ways. It'll slow down traffic, it makes it safer. Two-way traffic's safer than one-way traffic in residential areas. And these are residential areas, so. And so he had a traffic study done, that's what the figures that Duane got those from. And then the traffic committee met. So we're a Class 1 city, we're required to have a traffic committee with chief of police, city manager, city engineer, that's who helps design our streets, whether there be feeders or arterials or residentials, or whatever they are. So the traffic committee met, so they had the study, and the traffic committee met, and they recommended that we change these back to two-way streets. Got to the council and didn't pass. So didn't change the problem, didn't change the safety problem, it's still a safety problem. So, and the reason I say it's a safety problem, because we haven't had a fatal accident, we haven't had an accident yet. But when I was a kid, when I was a little boy, my dad worked for the railroad, and the railroad had a policy that when there was a fatality at a crossing, that's when they put up the Crossing Mars. Okay? I see a couple people nodding. That's right. So, don't want, and we used to have, we've had that in a couple different places in the city. Lincoln Street in particular, you used to be able to park on both sides, and then there was a fatality at 12th and Lincoln. Guy hit a trailer that was parked there at night, took parking off. So instead of fixing the problem after there's a tragedy, my, my deal is try to fix it before. And, and I understand change is hard, I do, I get it. And, but it's not change for change's sake. So it, it is definitely, if, so my question would be to those that, and I, saying that, I was contacted by 12 people, either by text or, and I had this conversation with another councilman, it used to be able to say, I talked to 12 people, but you can't anymore. So between emails and texts and phone calls and personal contacts, I was contacted by 12 people over this. And it was right down the middle. Six wanted to leave it alone, six wanted to change it. And there was a couple of reasons that I kind of scratched my head at, but, you know, it was their reason, so I left it alone. But my, I wanted to ask each of them that if they had all the information that we had, if they were responsible for public safety, which you are, which your vote tonight will be, you're responsible for public safety. If something happens and we didn't change it, and that's partly on us, if we, if they, if the people in the public that don't want it changed, if they would have been able to see the traffic study and heard the recommendations from the chief of police and the traffic committee and the city engineer and the city manager, if they wouldn't have changed their mind, other than it's always been that way. So I, I don't mean to reach out to anybody, but I see Chuck Rudesel sitting here, and I got an email from Chuck, and I know both he and his wife are kind of historians in the community, and I asked him, and he, he was nice enough to send me an email back about why and when it was changed, and it was changed in 1967. But the thing that I'd like to remind everybody is that here, that's actually going to vote for this tonight, it's, it is important to get public input. It's nice to see people in the audience here, it's nice to have you come and get up and say something and give us, and let us hear your opinion, but we're not naming the trail system. We're not, we're not naming a park. We aren't picking a color for a building that we're building. We're making a decision on public safety. And you have to remember that when you make your vote. So it isn't always, this isn't, we're, we're a representative form of government. This isn't a town hall. You don't get to just show up, and the most people that showed up and wanted to vote one way, that's the way you vote. Those, that makes it a political thing, and I've sat here for a long, long time, and in my tenure here, I've made two votes based solely on political consideration. I regretted them both. So what I'm asking my fellow councilmen tonight is, is to vote your conscience a little bit, but take all the information that you've been given. We've been given those reports, I'm assuming everyone read them. Take the recommendation by, from our police chief, take the recommendation from a city engineer, take the recommendation from the traffic committee, and vote to have, we're going, we're just voting on 8th Street first, and then we're going to vote on 7th, but I'd like you to take that opportunity and vote on 8th Street and, and vote to change it back to two ways. So I'll leave it at that.
We keep hitting on the safety factor. Last meeting, I sat right here and asked the chief if there was a safety problem more so on 7th and 8th as there is as any other street in this town, and he said no.
That's not what --
You have, that is what he said, Ted.
That's not what --
Don't interrupt me, Ted, I have the floor, thank you. He did say what I just got through saying, Ted, and I don't think there's been very many accidents on that road. You can probably ask these folks, they, they live there every day. But to get, to go to another point, what's it going to cost to change these streets over? You're going to have probably one or two guys from the city, probably a day or two, restriping those streets. That's a cost factor. You're going to have to re-sign those streets, that's another cost factor. Let's go down to the courthouse. Now you talk about a safety problem, on the east side of that courthouse, those stripes all run with the one-way. They're going to have to --
Rich, let's hold that conversation for 7th Street.
Okay.
Because right now, the way it's --
They're on 8th, all right, but --
Oh, I mean, you'll have plenty of time to say that, so let's, let's hold it to 8th Street.
Okay, but as I said, there's going to be cost to doing this. And it's not going to be a lot of cost, but it is going to be a cost. And like, like I said, we were put, like I said last time, we were put on this council by the people in the community. We are to do what they ask us to do. There's been many a times that I haven't agreed with my vote, but the folks of my ward wanted me to vote that way, so that's the way I voted, whether I agreed to it or not. That's what I did. And that's what we have to do here, guys, that's what they put us on here for, to do what the folks ask us to do.
One of the things, too, we need to discuss is that Nebraska has certain speed limits that they put. Nebraska follows statutory speed limits which provide uniform categories of speeds that can be traveled safely at certain preset maximum speeds under ideal conditions. Speed limits in Nebraska cannot go higher than statutory speed limits. Speed limits and, uh, speed limits, other, unless otherwise posted, are.
Let's, hold, let's, we're not talking about the speed right now, we're talking about one-ways.
Okay.
So we need to, you know, we gotta, we gotta keep it to the conversation at hand.
You know, because, you know, it has to do with the one-ways, too, you know, basically that.
But as far as requirements and things, we can move back to that, depending on how votes come out.
And also, I also have the cost of restriping the streets. I do have costs of that, that was given to me by, you know, by, let's see, who is it here? I guess, Jason Moore.
Okay.
So I do have costs on what it would cost to do that, so if you'd like --
You can share that if you'd like.
Okay. Basically, if we do change them, or, you know, if, like you said, need some changing done. I asked him to give us exact cost, you know, and I'm saying, you know, basically, employees are going to be paid whether they're working on this or not. You're, you're going, your trucks are going to be everything, but I asked him, no, I want to know actual labor costs and material costs to do this. Okay. First of all, you'll have sandblasting, you have $250 an hour for truck and equipment labor, eight hours a street, and so we're looking at 2,000 for sandblasting, the stripes often, you know, $2,000 per street. Okay, signs, I'll just go on. It works to change the signs and things like this, it's $2,000 a street. Paint, you know, this is what's, there's only 15 gallons of paint at $10. So like I say, you know, material-wise, there's nothing. Most of it is labor that already we're paying these, but this is what it's going to cost, $2,550 per street. So your grand total to, to change, you know, these things on 7th Street would be $6,550. On 8th Street, it would be $6,550.
Got to, got to make sure we just talk about 8th Street right now.
Okay, I'm sorry, on 7th Street. On 8th Street, I would be 600, thank you, Mayor, I apologize. $6,550 to change the striping on the streets, so.
If you have questions, somebody ask questions.
Okay. Why don't we move on to the public? As you come up, please state your name and your address, and share with what you'd like. Thank you. Anybody from the public?
My name is Janet Byers. I live at 823 North 8th Street, which is the corner of 8th and Summit. I am in opposition to changing the one-way to a two-way street, just like I was four years ago and prior to that. So, anyway, I've lived at that address for approximately 42 years, and probably have seen as much traffic flow as anyone in the area, except for my neighbor Sue O'Neil. One of the concerns I would have is with the safety of the streets, because if you look at Summit Street, you're coming up a hill, right around Garfield and hitting Summit. If anyone forgets that that is a, a two-way, you're going to have head-on collisions. That, that would be a concern of mine. I will say, after, I think it was in 2018 probably, that we talked about this, you know, we had a, we have a lot of kids in the neighborhood, and there was a lot of concern with the speed on that street. We at that time had a valley gutter, which was, you know, it was a source of entertainment for the neighborhood, because you'd hit it pretty hard and, and you would see the sparks fly. That was taken out, and I will say that probably the traffic did, the speed did increase. So, you know, that is a safety concern. Again, people are very accustomed to having a one-way, you know, it's, 8th Street is the street that brings traffic into the downtown area. that brings traffic into the downtown area. And I did a little research, I thought it was kind of interesting, in 1963 is when 8th Street became a one-way, and it was from Monroe to Lincoln that it became a one-way. I think somebody said a little bit ago, 1967, I think that was probably the Ella Street to Lincoln Street segment. They did not go into effect at the same time. I was curious, when you were talking about the traffic studies, has there been another traffic study since 2016? Somebody referred, I think it was you, Mr. Fairbanks, who referred to 2016. Has there been another traffic study done since then on 8th Street?
On 8th Street, no. There was one in 1977, there's one in 2006, actual traffic studies.
So those are not real current right now. So have you done, okay, that was the traffic study. Have you done a speed study?
No, no speed studies have been done.
Okay, so I guess my question would be, is the question of speed a perception or a reality? I think I just recently heard somebody say perception is reality, while I disagree with them, perception is perception and reality is reality. The other thing is, in all the years that I've lived there, I cannot remember an accident occurring on 8th Street, other than at 8th and Lincoln. And I think at one time, there were a lot of accidents happening there, but I don't believe it was because of the one-way street. I believe it was because they were going through the stop sign. So I think it was that type of thing. Another thing that I had looked at, and this goes to 7th Street, is the courthouse parking. And obviously, that will be discussed when you talk about 7th Street. And the other concern that I had is, I did not get notification of this meeting until Thursday. I talked to a number of people in the neighborhood. They hadn't even received a letter on Friday. So, you know, my concern was, did they have the opportunity to contact their councilman? And obviously, there were people who did contact you, but I did have a concern about that. So I would ask you to vote against changing the street. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, who else? Any other comments? Seeing none, council.
I'd just like to ask the audience, since nobody else wants to come up, by a raise of hand, how many wants it changed?
I think we want to talk about 7th Street.
7th Street.
We kind of got that message.
Well, there's no other comments, then, gentlemen, your vote, please.
Can I ask a question here, on which way, when we do this? Would you read, you know, so that we understand whether we're voting yes or no, or...
If you are in favor to changing 8th Street to two-way traffic, you will vote yes.
Okay.
If you're against, you will vote no.
Okay, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Your vote, please. Two, three, five, six. That passes six to two, with Escri and Kerr voting no.
Mayor.
Yes.
Just so everybody understands, the change won't take effect. The resolution says till May 1st. Obviously, there's some stuff that the board of public works will need to do, striping that kind of stuff. You obviously cannot paint during the cold winter months, so that's the reason for the May 1st date in your resolution.
Okay, move on to resolution number 7000, designating all traffic traveling on 7th Street between Ella Street and Monroe Street as two-way traffic.
I move that resolution number 7,000 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Discussion, starting with the city council.
Well, I, we'll go ahead, Terry.
I didn't speak on the other one, Mayor, because I'm kind of removed, my words kind of removed from that, and literally, my, I got contacted by 13 people, Ted, so I'm a little more, more popular. But they were, honestly, it was almost right down the middle on 8th Street. 7th Street, completely different. All 13 people that contacted me, two by face, four by phone, and the rest by email. They were 100% against changing 7th Street in any way. They loved it the way it was.
Yeah, I was contacted more on 7th Street than I was anybody, and majority of my contacts were all leaving it as it is. But the safe, the speed was a big concern for everybody. And I do think, after whatever is decided, the traffic committee needs to go back and look at a way, if it's stop signs, speed limits, parking arrangements, however that is, to try to control that speed, because that is a big concern for everybody that lives along there.
Mr. Mayor, about the same as what Mike and Terry both said, I was contacted by 12 people for 7th Street. Everybody was completely against it, changing it to two-way. I do have reservations myself about changing it to two-way, just due to the businesses, the courthouse, and other stuff that's along 7th Street, and entries to other stuff. So, but it was absolutely not.
I guess we're kind of flowing this way. So just so you know, so I'm speaking to the body here that's going to vote, but I just want to address the public. So when I brought this to council, and we started having these discussions, I got the impression that 8th Street would probably pass and 7th Street probably wouldn't. That's why I asked to have it on two separate votes. So, and everyone that contacted me that gave me an opportunity to tell them where I stood, I explained that to them. So, and I did that for a couple of reasons. First of all, I think that you're not going to see noticeable change. I mean, when we changed 5th Street, it did without a problem, although I did have a couple of people explain to me that, you know, when they make that corner off of Lincoln, they're by the Episcopal Church, to get on 5th, they have a tendency to still drive down it as a one-way. And I've got to admit that I've done it as well. But, that being said, it doesn't hurt any of us within the public to be a little more aware when we're driving. And having change, it is, like I said, it's not change for change's sake, but it is, it is a change. So, but I just, as I told the board, the body before, when we first talked about this, and Janet, Ms. Byers, we, the mayor talked about this on his radio program a couple of different times. We talked about it at the last city council. It was on the agenda then. It was reported in the newspaper. I, other than, and we mailed out a letter, I mean, I'm not quite sure what else the city could do to make sure that everybody was aware, because although it does affect everyone that lives in the neighborhood, these are streets that everyone drives on. So you have to take everyone into account. So, that being said, I want to, I'm, I think that this vote, this will probably fail. I'm still going to vote for it, but I want to remind everybody, you can still drive down it. We're not closing the street. You're just going to have to drive down it with a little more caution. Janet's comment about, you know, changing, and people driving the wrong way on it because they're used to it, it happens daily that somebody that's not from our community drives down it the wrong way, because they didn't see the sign, they weren't noticed. It happens every single day. When I worked here, I saw it every single day. So we've just been really fortunate. But I just want to remind you all that you can still drive down it. We're not closing it. We're just asking you to slow down a little bit and pay more attention, so, and look at oncoming traffic. So that's what I've got, Mayor.
Well, I was going to say something, but I think somebody's going to bring up the courthouse, so...
Well, I was going to sort of, you know, address that, too. Yes, that is a problem, you know. Stripes could be changed for the parking. The drop boxes and mailboxes, you know, could be taken across the street or to the parking lot, and you can pull in that other parking lot, we can make it an exit to go out of it. I agree, though, you know, 7th Street isn't as big a concern to me as, you know, 8th Street. You know, there are ways of getting around it. Again, going back, though, to like the, the speed limits, you know, that, you know, people have brought up and things that, you know, according to the state of Nebraska, in a residential area, the maximum speed is 25 miles per hour. So I, you know, I do think that the speed, you know, needs, we need to watch that, because, again, on 7th Street, you have a daycare center. The people on, they have to park, to me, on the wrong side of the street, and then try to go across the street and get their kids there. It's danger, you know. So, you know, once we figure this out, you know, and stuff, we'll bring up the issue about parking at a later date. But every other, every other street in residential, the driver gets out into the lane of traffic. On our one-ways, the passengers are required to get out. So you're talking about handicapped people, everybody, they're getting out in the lane of traffic. So I just wanted to bring that up. I know that, you know, that it's something that we won't be discussing tonight, but for people to think about, you know. If we do keep this as a, on 8th Street, there's no problem now, because we've just changed it. 7th Street, if we leave it a one-way, that is, it is a problem, so.
I do want to touch back on the courthouse. They'll have to re-stripe that. Who's going to pay for that? Is that going to be the county paying for that, or is that going to be the city paying for that?
No discussions have been had. I would assume that the city would take care of that for them, but there's been no conversations.
Probably going to add another couple, two, $3,000 onto the cost of this thing, which bumps us up to about $15,000 now, if this gets changed.
I did have two commissioners reach out to me, and they were not in favor of making the change on 7th Street for a number of reasons. So just wanted to share that in transparency. Okay, for the public. Again, state your name and your address.
I'm hoping I go last, huh?
What's that?
You were hoping I'd go last. My name is Kent Harland. I live at 822 North 7th in Beatrice. Before I read for my prepared statement, I have two things. There's been a lot of thought put into this. Thank you, Mr. Ruth, thank you for getting the things that we wondered about, and what's this going to cost? I think something that's been missed on 7th Street with the, with the cost around the courthouse, is you're going to have to redo the concrete, because all the curbs were poured in for northwest angle parking, so that's probably going to be addition. But, you know, there's been traffic studies, and they're not current, that, in my opinion, are not supported. There's somebody's opinion that they're dangerous for this, and Ted, God love you, didn't get run over all those years getting out of UPS. For a guy who gets out of his vehicle for a living, I understand your plight. God bless us both, maybe the gods will smile upon us as well. But the beauty of this is being able to have some thoughtful discussion. Before I get into that, something that hasn't really been done, is there's been some talk of, you're not talking to the people in the community, you're not asking, you're not asking. I've lived in that 150 feet on North 7th Street for 30 years. I've seen my own traffic study. I've lived my life there. I've raised my kids there. And even if it's outside of what the proper protocol is, Mr. Mayor, with no disrespect, would somebody like to ask questions from somebody who's lived it? I've lived there. What are your concerns? What are your problems? Ask me, I'm sitting here. I came here to talk to you, because you've taken the time out of your lives to care enough to represent this community. I think you deserve the same courtesy to be able to ask it of the public. Please?
I will. I mean, you know, again, because I did, I didn't go to everybody up and down the street, but I see somebody out, I stopped, and I talked to them, because I felt I needed to talk to them face-to-face. You know, but I only went to, about Lincoln Street, you know, on 7th and 8th, and things like that. I got some really good feedback from people, some really good feedback from people, and I really enjoyed, heck, one lady, I talked to her for over 30 minutes. She invited me in, asked me if I wanted coffee, you know, and things, so, I mean, I really enjoyed it. But, you know, that's a point, you know, as you're saying, you live on the street. And yes, everybody drives the streets, but to me, the most important people that are that live on those streets, because that affects you more than it affects somebody else, because you put up with it on a daily basis.
Exactly, we live it.
Yeah, you live it. And that's the one reason why I was going to just talk to the people on 7th and 8th Street.
If you came to my house, I'm sorry, I disconnected my doorbells 20 years. But I did.
Well, and I got to admit, I did go to some houses, but I tried to drive around for three days, and if I found somebody out, I stopped and talked to them.
Thanks for taking the time.
Yeah, but I feel that's, you know, that's part of my job, and this is an important subject, you know, so.
So, sir, unless you're going to do it in your prepared statement or something, do you have opinions about speed, two-way traffic, parking?
They are well documented here, and if I don't answer your question when I'm all done, please feel free to ask.
You can count on it.
I tried to put it in a non-boring story-type form.
It's like the big three to me, I guess, so.
It may or may not work.
You've got to know, Kent, he's got an opinion on everything.
So I've been told. And sometimes I probably should keep it to myself. Is there anybody else that has a question you'd like to ask for somebody who lives there?
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor. Of all the people sitting, who lives on 7th? How many of you were ever contacted by a councilman? Two, okay.
Just a letter in the mail.
Just a letter in the mail. I'm talking phone call, indoor person. Okay. That's all I needed.
No, I was called.
Okay.
I was called and asked about it.
Okay.
All right. If anybody else has anything, I'm glad to answer anything that's not in here at the end, and I think I touch on speed, Terry. Again, my name is Kent Harland. I live at 822 North 7th in Beatrice. My wife, T.J., and I have lived in the 800 block of North 7th Street for 30 years. Yes, 30 years. We lived for eight years at 820 North 7th, and we moved to 822 North 7th, where we've lived for the last 22 years. Yes, we moved next door. I don't necessarily recommend that. It's a never-ending process. We like our northbound one-way street in front of our house. It was a consideration when we originally bought the property on the street. By having one-way street, traffic moves freely out of the downtown and courthouse areas, more so than a two-way residential street, especially when you have to account for parking. If you ask people, why do you drive down 7th Street? Why do you drive down the street in front of my house? They say, because it's a more efficient, less congested way to get out of downtown. Not everybody likes to drive 6th Street. Now, there's an equal number of stoplights and stop signs, which should regulate that flow. Also, when that area of town was constructed, it was constructed with narrow streets and driveways. Our driveway is really narrow. We have to encroach upon the other northbound lane to get in our driveway or drive across my yard. Now, not that I couldn't fix that in my business, but I don't need to drive across my yard every day. So it takes a wide swing. I can negotiate that into traffic moving the same direction, instead of having to pull into oncoming, oncoming traffic. A few years ago, the city replaced the wheelchair access on the corners of 7th Street, 7th and Summit, to be specific. In doing so, they placed the radius of that wheelchair ramp so far out in the middle of the street, with a seven or eight-inch-high curb, that you can't make a legal turn around that corner and not either encroach into the other lane, either northbound into 7th Street, or into the westbound portion of Summit, or hit the curb. It's your choice. If there's other people there, and you wait for them to clear the corner, they look at you like, just drive. Would you just drive? They don't know what you're doing. Well, if you choose not to take that curb, don't take my word for it. Go up and take a look at those curbs and see how many times they've been run over. They may be the best-traveled section of that street. If you do it in the next few days, you'll probably see where I put some white paint out in the streets. And we raised hell with the guys when they were, when they were putting in those wheelchair ramps, and I said, my God, you're putting curbs in the middle of the street. So as they went further north, they pulled those radiuses back. The radius a block north of our house is 10 inches further back than ours. It's different, I marked it. Go check my paint marks, I'm glad to do it with you, for what it's worth, but they are Which side of the street do you propose parking on if you change 7th Street? It's three lanes wide. Are you going to have parking on both sides? Does that present trouble for the garbage company? If you put parking on both sides, it's still only three lanes. It's going to be a slalom. It's going to be a race to see who can get down the street. Who can get there first? The street's not wide enough. Are you planning to take more property to make it a full four-lane, so you can have parking on either side? Or are you just going to eliminate the parking? I understand that there are safety issues from the, from the survey regarding 7th and 8th Streets. Sorry, I slipped in the 8th Street thing there. We've lived there 30 years, and we've had two accidents on our corner. Both were from exactly the same thing. Somebody came off 6th Street eastbound... Somebody came off Sixth Street eastbound, failed to yield at Seventh, and it was a significant emotional experience for everyone. One of them was a pretty good one. But that wouldn't be any difference if that traffic was going north or south. Failed to yield is failed to yield. More often than that, we probably have seen some safety issue with speed. You know, depending on the group of young people that reside in this town, it depends on how much speed we have on Seventh Street. So what do you do about that? And we've seen some good ones, really good ones. So what did we do? We went to our local police department, not to the front desk, not to the chief, not for a study, not for anything. We talked to the beat cops and said, hey, could we generate a little extra revenue for the city? They were glad to. They didn't come and babysit my house. They didn't park in front of my house. But if you go another block north of my house, those that launch from Seventh and Lincoln are probably into that four hundred and twenty-four dollar range by the time they break that hill. And you know what? They only have to write a few and the problem solves itself. They have been awesome and always been polite and attentive about those problems. You know what? Cops or people complain about stuff every day. I was one for fourteen years and I know what that feels like. But they paid attention to it. Have they resolved it a hundred percent? No, because they don't babysit my front yard. Have they made a difference? Yes, and what they caused that group individuals to do is they move on somewhere else, restoring the safety to my street. If we're talking about safety surveys and those things, I think the surveys are for a problem that doesn't really exist. Two accidents and I think you can go anywhere in town and probably find equal speeds on just about any street. What does that involve? Maybe a little more attention from the police. If you ask them, they'll do it. Nobody's touched on the speed limits on Seventh Street. So for the record, south of Lincoln Street, they're twenty-five as specified in as residential areas. I believe when you go from Lincoln to Monroe, that's considered a through street and goes to thirty-five. So if you change that, do you think you're going to make that stretch a road twenty-five? Well, if you do, then you probably have plenty of time to drive the slalom for parking on both sides. You probably really do if you're going to slow it down that much. Plus, you'll generate a lot of revenue. If you change that to a residential street and give it two-way status, do you statutorily have to change the speed limit? That's a question for the board. Here's the deal. Don't take this, don't take this wrong, but I'm pretty much a say it as you mean it kind of guy. What I, what I think you're going to know, you don't live there. You people don't live on Seventh and Eighth Street. We do. We've chosen to make it our home for thirty years. I don't live there because I can't afford to live somewhere else. That's what I have chosen. We like it. We live it every day. You don't. You represent us. Leave Seventh and Eighth Streets alone. Now, you've already changed Eighth Street. You need to leave Seventh Street alone. I think there's some benefit for what it does for the traffic that's going to be put back onto Sixth Street. That would revolve a whole nother traffic study and we don't need that. I think we can all make that decision. But here's a statistic. How many times do you people leave your homes every day? That's a real question. How many times do you leave? Do you leave four times a day? Your significant other, do they leave four times a day? Backing out of my driveway, I have to negotiate traffic from one direction on a narrow street with parking across the street. I can do that. It's not a problem. Having to negotiate traffic from two directions would be completely different. If my wife and I both leave an average of four times a day, then what you're talking about affects me twenty-nine-hundred-and-twenty times in an average year. Twenty-nine-hundred-and-twenty times after thirty years, I'm going to have to remember to check the traffic to the right or to the left and to the right as I back up because I may have a car coming from the north. Think about that. Is there anything you do in your life that would change that would affect you twenty-nine-hundred-and-twenty times in the next year? As I said when I started, we've lived on Seventh Street for thirty years. We like it just the way it is. We hear no complaints from our neighbors who are generally long-term residents. We've lived there thirty years. Jan Byers lived there twelve years before we moved in. Most of the people have lived there as long as we do. We like what we have. The change that's been proposed to Seventh Street, is it wanted or needed? Please leave Seventh Street alone. If you have any questions or we can help you as a residents of that area make a more informed decision, we're at your disposal. We truly appreciate the service that you do to this community. Not many people, not enough people say that. This takes time. It takes listening to people complain. It takes taking a stand, even if you might have to vote different than your constituents want you to. Or you might have to vote different than you want to for the good of your constituents. We're not hard to find. If you need more information, you know how to get ahold of me. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience?
I haven't lived there thirty years. My name is Vicki Kane. I live at 810 North Seventh. I moved there two months ago. And I just wanted, I have more questions, I think, than statements. I quite frankly am okay with it staying. I'm okay with it changing. I just would like the traffic to slow way down because it is actually very terrifying to try to back out onto that street when you've got people drag racing from Seventh Street coming. By the time they hit my house, they're doing forty miles an hour. And it's actually, I can't even walk my dogs on it because there's about a foot and a half of the, between the sidewalk and the curb. And I'm just afraid, it's just terrifying. I wasn't expecting that when I moved in. So I know they're all used to it and everything, so they'll harden me, I'm sure. But I did also want to say that the fact that, I feel this is just kind of a, I feel it's kind of rushed. I know that this was done a few years back. I was around at the time. I didn't live on Seventh at the time and I didn't really care because I didn't live on Seventh or Eighth, so it didn't matter. But I just feel like there was a meeting two weeks ago and now they're in a meeting and they're voting and we're passing it and it's dumb. And all we've gotten communication from youth toward me was, I got a letter. Thank you, by the way. That was really, I was like, this is brilliant. I've never gotten one of these in my life. And the other thing was when I did respond to you and to my two councilmen, you all responded and it was great. But no one reached out to me to ask me in advance. So I think this would be nice to have a lot more discussion. I think a lot more, I think the speed is my main concern. And I think that if we could find a way other than disrupting everyone's lives and taking all these expenses and costs and, I mean, how much are stop signs? What kind of impact does it have? You know, do we have a, what about speed bumps? What about twenty-first century traffic camps? You know, I mean, there's other options here on how to control the traffic that I would like to see that kind of a study so that we can make sure that we do make the right decision and that the money we do spend is the best money to spend. So that's my thought. So, any questions for me? Yeah, hi.
I was never going to vote to change Seventh in the first place. Mine's already said on no.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
I'll make it real short.
That's all right.
Jane Keefe, over. I've lived on Seventh Street for thirty-seven years.
You've got to give me your address.
Oh, 821 North Seventh. So I've lived there thirty-seven years. I've never seen an issue other than maybe speed. I don't really see speed an issue until probably, we live at the corner of Seventh and Summit, about that area down to McDonald's is when they really pick up speed. But I'm with Kent. I think if you start issuing tickets, it may slow it down. Please don't change our street. That's all I have to say. If it ain't broken, don't fix it.
Thank you.
That's what your brother said when I was in there the other day.
Anyone else?
They ad-lived, they're so well. Emily Haxby, eighty-eight sixty-seven Southwest Eighty-Sixth Road, Claytonia. No, I do not live in Beatrice, but we were discussing this at the courthouse and you alluded to it. Thank you. The striping on the, for our parking. We also would have to move our drop boxes. Those are highly used. Also, that post, post office drop box there is one of the most used in town. So we'd have to relocate those. For DMVs, it's the one way for testing. The sheriff's office uses VIN checks for large vehicles and trailers. Public employees and crossing for safety both ways. And as far as safety for one-ways, if they weren't that safe, there probably wouldn't be as many of them in Lincoln. They're everywhere. Another part of that one-way with truck traffic, turning a semi into a two-way is a lot of fun. So if you change that seven-way into two-way, then you're going to lose your truck route issues too. That's all I got. Any questions? Cool.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Vicki Kane, 810 North Seventh. The other thing I was wondering about, and I thought if, it just kind of popped in my head, I said, I don't know if changing it to two-way, I guess I'd like to see, you know, real studies because it seems if you change it to two-way, that doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be slower. I mean, you say, oh, it's small, you only have one lane of traffic instead of two and it's going to slow traffic down, but that didn't happen on Lincoln Street. And so what's going to stop it if it's still a through street? That it's not going to turn into just another Lincoln Street and we're going to suddenly have this much more traffic going south and north because there's no stoplights or no stop signs or anything. So that was another thing that I just wanted to throw out there, is my thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you for everybody's opinions here. And it keeps coming up with speed, you know, and the parking. And agreed, you know, that, like I say, with, I started alluding to earlier about the speed limits, the way the state sets them and things. And I know, you know, he said something about, you know, the regulations in the street or how they're designated and stuff. But right now, what I've been able to find out, both Seventh and Eighth Street are residential streets. So the maximum speed limit, you know, in those residential streets should be twenty-five miles an hour. And I don't think anybody on Seventh Street would mind if the traffic was at twenty-five miles an hour, leaving it one-way but twenty-five miles an hour. One of the things, though, that I'm going to tell you that I will be bringing up is changing the parking on that. I think I might have said that earlier because you're asking your passengers to get out into the lane of traffic instead of the driver, which is like on every other street in town. When you park, the driver gets out in the lane of traffic. On Seventh Street, the passenger gets out. And so you have your kids at the daycare and that getting out into the lane of traffic. So, you know, I'm just going to say that that is something that I am going to be bringing up at a future meeting about, you know, if we leave this, leave Seventh Street as it is tonight, to ask that the parking be changed to the other side. So if you guys have any comments on this, please call me. You know, my phone number's in there. If you want my phone number, I'll give you my phone number. I have a separate phone number for council. I will gladly talk to you. I'll come to your house or whatever you want to do, you know, to speak, so. Thank you.
I'm Shalina McGuire. I live at 722 North Seventh. And the only thing that I have to say that Kent and everybody else did not say is, I believe that the east or the west side of Seventh Street is actually commercial. And thus why this speed limit is thirty-five there.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. What I've only been able to find out is residential, but I appreciate you telling me that.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You are correct, by the way.
Thank you.
Yes. I know it goes down the middle of the street.
So everybody in the, everybody's listening. So one zone commercial, one zone residential, we have different zones in the, so.
Yeah. But the other side of the street is actually.
So then, and one lane has to be twenty-five and the other can be thirty-five.
I live on the thirty-five.
We checked on the zoning years ago.
Kent, you got to come up, you got to come up. Kent talks from the audience.
Thank you.
Kent Harland, I was here a little bit ago. We ran a commercial business from our home that was home-based years ago. Unless they've changed the zoning limits, both sides of Seventh Street are residential, commercial. And the alley between Seventh and Eighth Street is a dividing line where it goes from residential, or I believe they call it R2, to residential. I know that's how it was years ago because we checked on it and we ran a business. Unless they've changed the zoning, the zoning laws, the alley between Seventh and Eighth Street, north and south, is where that changes. If I'm incorrect there, I would be glad to be corrected because it's good to have appropriate information. Mr. Temple Meyer, is that information you have at fingertips?
I do. So I have the zoning map here. I pulled it up on our website anyway, so it's a great source of information. So downtown, you go central business district up from Market to Elk. And then you have general commercial on the west side. The east side looks like it goes R4. The entire, both sides of the street are R4 between High Street and not quite to Grant. Excuse me, I was, yes. Then at Grant Street, you have general commercial on the west side, R4 on the east side. Washington, again, we kind of sneak over, have R4 for about a half a block. And then from Washington to, what street is that? Jackson, you have residential commercial on the west side, R3 on the east side.
R3 is straight residential?
Multiples family dwellings.
And then?
Single, you can put up duplexes, triplexes.
Okay. And then at Jackson Street, we go to residential commercial on the east side and general commercial on the west side. And we continue that until Irving Street. So, there you go.
Thanks for the clarification on the salad and zoning.
It moves, but.
It's odd. We had checked on it years ago. If I was incorrect, I apologize for taking the board's time.
Well, that was certainly Chinese algebra that we just heard. I believe I heard Mr. Rue state something that the state posts unless otherwise posted. If I think.
Okay, they say maximum, maximum.
Maximum.
And if it's posted, it can be less than maximum.
So that gives us the authority to, if I'm not mistaken, gives us the authority to post whatever it is we want for the.
It's also the street designation, but I think we're moving.
Yes, exactly.
That's a through way and not a residential.
Yes, that's exactly.
But let's get back on to, I mean, we kind of digressed into a whole nother subject there.
Yes.
Can we just take a vote, Mr. Mayor?
You say, you need to say, I call the question.
I call the question, Mr. Mayor.
If you do that, then we got to actually do a parliamentary procedure and we got to vote on that.
Okay, well, let's just move on because we're talking about two-way streets and not speed limits.
All right, gentlemen, your vote, please.
So again, if you vote yes, you're voting to change Seventh Street to two-way traffic. If you vote no, you're voting to keep it the way it is, which is one-way traffic.
Your vote, please. And that is seven against, and Mr. Fairbanks, four. So that fails. All right, there are no ordinances tonight. And by the way, thank everybody for their input and how they were input. It was very professional and very well-thought-out conversations and I truly appreciate that. Okay, the public forum. The purpose of public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Is there anybody here for the public forum?
Yes. Me. Okay.
No, you can't. Councilmembers aren't supposed to bring stuff up during public forum.
Oh, all right. Always having a past.
Thursday meetings for that.
Going once, going twice, okay. We'll move on to discussions and reports. City administrator's monthly report.
Bob?
Yeah.
Did you tell them they don't have to stay if they don't want to? They're more than welcome to, we'd love to have them.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to leave, you can, but you're more than welcome to stay, as Ted has just pointed out, so.
You're not interrupting the meeting if you get up and leave. You're more than welcome to stay and listen to the rest of it, but you don't have to stay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You only say that because it's my turn to talk.
I was going to say, just took your thunder away, didn't it? Wow.
I see people sitting, or anxiously waiting for us to get done, so.
A couple of highlights in the monthly report. First off, I just want to say thank you to the water department. If you read through the report, you saw they had four water main breaks all around Christmas time. If you remember, that time period was extremely cold. And so you add the cold weather in there, you add in the, obviously the holidays with families. Those guys had to take some time away to take care of some things for the city. And so I would share, we say thank you to those guys. Legislature is back in session, so just kind of a few things to highlight out there. You've got LB45, which was introduced by Senator Dorn. Basically, what it would create is the revitalization rural Nebraska grant fund. Idea there is they would put ten million dollars per year into demolition. Idea there is they would put $10 million per year into demolition of commercial buildings. Second-class cities get first priority, then the first-class cities, but at least would be something out there, so we'll see how that one progresses. You also had the LB-224 today, which, or, which got introduced this week, which was the Adopt the Aid to Municipalities Act. So, again, as a way to get some money back to cities. Haven't been able to find the exact formula of how it'd work yet, but at least it's something out there that would be positive on our side. A couple of other ones out there. LB-389 was introduced that would restrict TIF to once every fifty years on a parcel of property. We've obviously not had TIF that long, so we don't have any that would roll back off those rolls yet, but that was introduced.
Do we, do we, I'm sorry. Do we have communities out there that run TIF out fifty years?
No, you can't run TIF fifty years.
I know what that is. I, I know what you're saying. I, I read that. I mean, I read the bill. I, I just wondered if, as I read that, is that, is that, you know, do we have, isn't there a statutory limit?
Statutory limit is, is fifteen years.
I thought it was twenty.
It depends on, if it's extremely blight, then you go to twenty.
Okay.
But you gotta think like, for us, a site like Storcraft, so, you know, unless you're parcelling it up, and each parcel is a different time period.
Yeah.